An invocation. Reverend Wilson, thank you.
Amen. We have a moment of quiet in order to give thanks for all that we have. We give thanks for those, as the psalmist says, who go down to the sea in ships that do business in great waters, that see the work of the Lord and His wonders in the deep. We come together to find the best way to govern this community, giving thanks for the freedom that we have. This week is going to be elections in many of the communities, and we give thanks that we have the freedom for elections, that we have the freedom to come together and to find common ground. We give, we give thanks for the gift of life, how we can affirm those who feel, who fear that they no longer have worth, but to say that all people have worth of your, of every day. We honor the veterans who answered their call, their country's call. We honor the employees here who have worked so hard in the service of those of us who live here. We give thanks and look for guidance on how we can care for our natural resources, for the water. We pray and give thanks for this meeting, that it may shine as a moment of our democracy. Bless you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Wilson. May we stand to the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let everyone know that Commissioner Ross is not with us today. He's out of town, so he won't be with us today.
County manager?
Yes, sir. Chairman, item two on, or item one on the agenda is the opening remarks from the chairman.
Thank you. Just a few comments this morning. We had the privilege recently, on the 22nd of October, to have with us Michelle Osborne, who's the chief deputy commissioner of North Carolina Department of Insurance, come and speak with us at First Flight High School concerning the, certainly, the insurance situation with private homeowners in Dare County and the rates. Seems like we have to fight that annually with the NC DOI. But I want to thank our planning director, Donna Creve, and Willa Kelly, executive director of the OBX Realtors, for setting this up. And it was a well-attended event. I want to thank Commissioner House and Bateman for attending. I thought it was a very well-attended function and a lot of good questions and a lot of good information for our citizens. The, the next morning, that Wednesday morning, myself and Public Information Officer Dorothy Hester, had the privilege of meeting one-on-one with Ms. Osborne and her staff. And one of the things that came out of that particular meeting was we are constantly asking the NC DOI to hold public hearings in the areas that are most affected so that they can have feedback from its citizens. She was very, very open to that, and, and her staff is working on that. And if, worst-case scenario, if they're not going to have the public hearings here, we will be able to do this remotely so that our citizens can come to a facility such as our boardroom and be able to have, be live and, and hold those public hearings. So that's certainly a step in the right direction. And I want to commend the chief deputy commissioner for entertaining that, and certainly there'll be more, more to follow on that. Had the privilege recently, once again, along with our public information officer last Tuesday, to go to Mako Mike's and receive the Health and Human Services Community Assessment Report. And our director, Sheila Davies, of our Health and Human Services Department is here, and I asked her if she would make this presentation at one of our board meetings, and she graciously agreed to do that. So I'm hoping that we'll have that on our next board meeting. But this is a 2019 Dare Community Health Needs Assessment Summary, and it's, it's quite a bit of data in this, in this pamphlet. I'll show you what it looks like. They are available for our public, but the, the information and the data in here is very, very critical. It talks about anywhere from cancer incident rates to being substance abuse prevention and safety, our transportation issues, our older adult information. It's some really, really good stuff in here, and percentages and information that can certainly be helpful to our citizens. And Sheila, I want to thank you for agreeing to bring this to our board at our next meeting so, so that the public, we look forward to sharing that with our board and the public. I had a meeting, once again, with Dean Sweeney, the acting president, Twyford of COA, and Mr. Ronnie Sloan, who is with the Outer Banks Hospital, to recently talk about some potentials of partnering with them down the road, long-term, and talking about some long-term goals with, with what we're doing here in Manio and our COA facility. So that's exciting, to talk about some long-term goals. The county manager, myself, and the, our finance director, Mr. Clausen, we had a, a conference call with our architect to discuss a full plan on that site and, and show us some architectural preferences that, that we've told them and shared with them that we'd like. So we're anxious to see something, hopefully, in the next two or three weeks from our architect with respects to what that new facility is going to look like. And, and as, as anxious as I am, I'm hoping it's probably mid-December, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clausen, that we will certainly see some demolition going on of all those structures in Manio so that we can have a nice, clean site way ahead of time before any construction takes place. So I'm anxious, I'm anxious to be out there with the first mole knocking the first brick down. So. Unlike, unlike the vice chairman, he, he was, he and my booth were wanting to see the buildings come down in Manio, but I didn't, they, they moved so quick, vice chairman, I didn't have a chance to get my mole out, but I will get my mole out and knock a brick out over there because I, I can't wait to see those facilities come down and have that site cleaned and, and ready for a, a new facility in hopefully 18, 24 months. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about that. And I want to, I want to thank the vice chairman and Commissioner Ross and the county manager for, for heading the Raleigh recently. A, a number of us have been to Raleigh to, to talk about essential housing. I'm not going to use that other word, and most of you folks know who I'm, what I'm referring to. But as, as, as Murray Helen Goodlow Murphy recently stated in an article she wrote, Dare County making some moves on housing. And that we are, that we are. This board is committed to making some moves in housing. As I mentioned, the vice chair, Commissioner Ross, and, and county manager, and I'm sure the vice chair will go into more detail on that visit under Commissioner's comments, but I want to thank them for, for taking the lead and, and going and talking to some folks in North Carolina with the school of government. And hopefully, we're going to have some proposals for the Bowser Town property in maybe the next 30 days or so. So our board is committed to essential housing. As most of you are aware, more than a year ago, our board started the initiative to lower barriers in creating essential housing. And then, once again, in September of this year, the board adopted some changes in the zoning codes to facilitate year-round housing and development in unincorporated Dare. And we've talked about duplex lot sizes, multifamily dwellings, accessory dwelling uses, and, and we have extended those to a number of areas. Cluster housing is another thing. So we are taking the lead. This board is taking the lead, and I'm hoping that our towns will follow suit. I meet with the mayors on a monthly basis for lunch, and I'm pushing them hard to take some, some essential housing steps in their individual municipalities, but unincorporated Dare and this board is committed to providing essential housing for our citizens in unincorporated Dare. So stay tuned. This is exciting and anxious to share with you down the road of what potentially may come from Bowser Town. And then, last but not least, that's why I have my red, white, and blue on today. I hope tomorrow you will all go to the polls and vote. Your vote counts. Every individual vote counts, and I encourage you to exercise your right to vote and to go and vote for whomever you wish that you think will certainly align with your thoughts, but take that responsibility and go and vote. It's critical. So with that said, county manager, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda, and that's the presentation of the county service pins. First on our list, if Bernice Jardell would come forward to receive her 10-year pin from Holly Meekins.
Good morning, ladies.
Hey, good morning. Thank you. Thanks for letting us come forward and have the opportunity to produce, to present Bernice Jardell with her 10-year pin. Bernice came to us in 2009 with a world of experience in home health nursing and hospital nursing. She is an RN, and she is one of the lead nurses who case manage and go into patients' homes to provide the direct care. The patients love Bernice. She is smart, and she has the ability to, to meet people where they live and help them manage their illness and achieve their goals. She'll go the extra mile to help her patients and her coworkers. She is somebody who you can count on to get the job done. Her coworkers love Bernice as well. She works hard for the team, and she advocates for the students and for her coworkers to advance themselves in the profession. Bernice willingly shares her knowledge and helps out with understanding, compassion, and a large dose of humor. I love working with Bernice and appreciate all that she does and hope that she's got another 10 left in her. Thanks, Bernice.
It's been a gift and a pleasure to work and service this community. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Bernice. Thank you.
Next, we have a pin that we don't often get a chance to give, a 35-year pin. If Carol Saunders would come forward to receive her 35-year pin from Dave Clausen.
Right, you're, you're right, county manager. Thirty-five, that's, that's one of the longest ones. I mean, we ain't but 150 years in the county, so. Carol, congratulations.
Thank you.
Carol, you know, obviously started in 1984. I think we've got three people in our department that hadn't been born yet. She started in accounts payable, and I just asked her how long she's been doing payroll, and she doesn't know. So, but she chose to make that switch. I mean, it's, it's not an easy thing. We had a retirement and just wanted to learn and do something new. And I'm going to go way back. We get the certificates for the audit report. You're about to get the 29th one and the, the first one. Carol was the one that came to me. I just started, and I wanted to get this done, but she's the one that had more to do with it than anybody else. She learned word perfect and did the whole thing and, and made extra time somehow to get the first couple of drafts of that done. There's probably, and honestly, there's probably nobody in the state that knows the software that we use, both for accounts payable and payroll, better than Carol does. She's not, she doesn't let, you know, we just don't repeat doing the same thing over and over. She loves finding new stuff in it and, and just making stuff better. So that's why, I mean, she can work as long as she wants to. I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, Dave.
Carol, I hope we got another lease 1015 out of there.
I don't know about that. If it weren't for the people that I work with, I wouldn't be.
I mean, let's make it even 50. I mean, come on, let's make it even. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Next is our employee of the month, and if Shana Fulmer would come forward to make that presentation.
Good morning, Shana.
Hey, good morning, everybody. It is my great pleasure to be able to introduce the employee of the month, Mr. Bob Bostain.
Shana, he's sitting, he's sitting back there, and he got up and he said, "What the devil am I doing at this point?"
I thought what I told Keith for this closing.
Those probably weren't the exact words, but something like that. For those of y'all that don't know Mr. Bostain, he is our HVAC technician, and he's been with us for three years. So I wanted to read some of the comments that his coworkers wrote about him in every day.
I appropriate some of it.
I did. I really did. This one, I think, summed it up the best because I think it hit on everything that says a lot about Bob. Bob is a great guy with a positive outlook and personality. He's quick to jump in and assist whatever way he can, regardless of the situation, whether it be before or after hours or even weekends. I remember a time that Bob was actually on vacation in Florida, and he had his laptop with him, and he was diagnosing problems from Florida for us. So I think that says a lot. Bob's HVAC knowledge and ability to quickly and accurately diagnose a problem is a valuable tool for the county HVAC program, especially from a system downtime and cost perspective. It is my feeling that he sees the problem as his own and goes to whatever lengths needed to get it corrected as quickly as possible to minimize downtime and discomfort for the affected end-users. It is without a doubt that his service to the county is one that deserves recognition as employee of the month. And when you think about July and August heat and the AC being down, that says a lot, that he wants to be able to get in there and get something done quickly. Couple more comments. He always makes himself available. He puts his work at the top of his priority list. He treats his job with the county as if it were his own business and the people he works for his own customers. It is a pleasure to supervise him, even though he needs no supervision. I disagree with that a little bit, but. His superior knowledge on HVAC equipment, from the simple unit to the more complicated, bigger commercial units, which involve the control systems, it, it's really an asset to this county because, as you all know, in the 24 years I've been with the county, the county has certainly grown and expanded, and our buildings have become bigger and more complicated, and the HVAC, HVAC systems, not only is it a HVAC, HVAC system now, but it comes with a whole other component, which is a control system. And this guy right here makes it all come together. And I thought this was a really nice comment, too. Whenever I need a hand with something or just some info, Bob doesn't act like he's better than me. He always helps, no problem. So I just wanted to thank him for what he does for the county. I don't think it can be overstated that someone with his expertise and qualifications, he only came to us about three years ago, and it's a very complicated job that he performs for the county, and he does it with such ease, and it really makes us value him not only as an employee, but as a friend, and he's also a really super cool guy. So, thanks, Bob.
Oh, shoot. Thank you, sir.
And let's see. You get to put this in your van.
Well, good job.
Yep, and ride that around. And, yeah.
Well, thanks.
So, thanks, everybody.
Congratulations, Bob. Ah, thanks. Like I said, I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to work for the county, and like I said, it's a good, a good group of guys here. I don't, I, I.
And girls.
But it's all good. I adore everything up.
Hey, Bob, as you have seen, we do have 35-year pins.
Yeah. Blame me, I'm doing my best trying to get them. All right, guys, we appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Next, we have a, a recognition of a milestone one of our employees, and if Chris Ward and Pat Irwin come forward, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Members of the board. We are here to publicly recognize Chris Ward, water treatment plant operator at the Kill Devil Hills North Reverse Osmosis Plant. Chris was recently named the Sea Well Certified Operator of the Year Award by the North Carolina Water Works Operators Association. Chris was recognized for demonstrating outstanding ability, devotion, and technical expertise in the operation of a water treatment facility. A thank you to Chris for his dedication to trainee and water treatment operations for Dare County.
All right. Great job.
Chairman, I'll add a little to that. Our, our water system runs well, and it's one of the best around. Pat and his crew get recognized regularly, but when people like Chris on his staff get statewide awards, it just, it goes to show the leadership and, and the hard work that they do over there, and we're really proud of what he did and what they do for our citizens and our water system.
Absolutely. Awesome.
Ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda is public comment. Any of you all that received an award, if you'd step outside and get a picture, y'all, yeah, and we'll wait just a second before we go to public comment. Hang on a second. Hang on a second. Sit down just one second. Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that will begin your time. When the yellow light comes on, you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, I have Charles Parker.
That would be big, man.
And please come forward now. One last thing. If you're here to speak about Leslie Lane, there's another public comment for that separately. Please wait until then to do that.
Okay, my name is Charlie Parker, live in Kill Devil Hills. I saw on the agenda today for spending some money to buy Panico Jacks, the Soundside Center. So as a citizen, I looked and I said, "You know, I remember. A couple of months ago, Johnson Consulting was updating everything so that we could look and see that everything is going smoothly." So after about a half an hour of searching through the Tourism Bureau's site, I found the PowerPoint presentation for the Soundside Center. And in there, they said they consulted all of the stakeholders, and I realized I'm a stakeholder from the largest group of stakeholders, the citizens of Dare County. Excuse me. So I looked at this presentation from Johnson Consulting, and there were some things in there that troubled me. It didn't look like the numbers were adding up properly. And here's a, for instance, in their pro forma statement of income being generated going out 10 years, every year, whatever we do with the Soundside Center, they're estimating we're going to lose a quarter million dollars each year. We're spending a lot of money here, and it's not even going to break even. They estimate, depending on what gets done, the county will be spending between 14 and 70 million dollars for the Soundside Center. As a little bitty stakeholder, I want to make sure everything adds up nicely so that we get a return on our investment of money in the Soundside Center. So then I looked in their pro forma going forward. They project, five years from now, that there will be 128 events at the Soundside Center. That's two and a half events a week. Is that a realistic number? And all of these events would then be generating income, which would be offsetting the quarter million dollar loss. If they don't even make all that, the losses are going to be higher. Things just don't add up to me. They figure they would increase the attendance of somewhere between 65,000 and 72,000 people. If you then take that and divide it in the amount of money they think it'll generate for the area, it's $190 per person. That's not much. So I'm looking at all their numbers, and I don't know where they came from. And it's just a bullet presentation, so I don't know where the backup numbers are. But they raise serious questions. And some of the things like, okay, if this is going to be all through the year, where are the people going to stay? Are there going to be different ways for people to have housing here? In the summertime, we're already full. So if they put on some events, there's no place to bring other new people in because we're full up. So my bottom line is, as a citizen stakeholder, I wonder if these presentations have forgotten one thing, what the people of Dare County would like to see happen there. So I'd suggest perhaps the board might want to form a committee of citizens to look at everything there. You might find that one of the things the original Johnson Consulting said was, "People come here because of what the Outer Banks is." And as we keep developing, we're turning. And as we keep developing, we're turning what it is to what it was. So that perhaps the Soundside Events Center could really get into the waterfront. Yes, some events places, but not a big giant hotel and everything else. Because if someone could make money off a hotel and conference center here, they would have built it already. So all the tourism money that, if we lose a quarter million a year, we could have taken that quarter million, saved it, a house on the beach goes up for sale, take it, knock it down and put in more parking, more people could get to the beach. There are a lot of different things we could do with the money, and it seems to me there's not enough thought as to all the money that's going in here, is it doing the best thing for Dare County? And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Sir, other public comment this morning. Anyone else like to speak at public comment? I see no hands here. Any public comment from Buxton?
Yes, I have one speaker, Ms. Virginia Elhoff.
Welcome this morning.
Thank you, good morning. I'm here on the part of our Brigands Bay Homeowners Association in Frisco. Kyle Perry is our president, and he is out of town, and I'm the secretary. And I'm here reading a letter in representation of him for our subdivision. We would like to bring attention to the fact that on our subdivision, we are missing some fire hydrants on the sound side, and it presents a safety hazard to our area. If you look at the recent Surf City Fire in Pender County, people had to be evacuated by boats, and this has been a concern in front of our board for a few years, as long as I've been serving, and we wanted to bring it to your attention. Kyle's letter begins, "As the homeowners of Brigands Bay are concerned about the lack of fire hydrants on Treasure Court within our subdivision. Over the last few years, five more newly constructed houses have been built on Treasure Court. We believe that having no fire hydrants to supply the fire department with water will cause certain destruction if a fire was to start at any of the structures on Treasure Court. We are requesting that the proper number of fire hydrants be installed on Treasure Court before it's too late. We ask you to please make fire hydrants on Treasure Court a top safety priority and to ease the worries of current homeowners in the Brigands Bay subdivision. We thank you for your time. Thank you respectfully, Kyle Perry, BBHA President." I've also brought forward a list of a court petition, Treasure Court petition, signed by all residents. That's 26 lots, and we feel that these people deserve to be protected the way the rest of the subdivision is. And we also have an issue of water pressure in this area, but our main concern is the fire hydrants for the area. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
No further public comment.
That, Mr. Chairman, we close the public comment. It is past 9:30. Would you like to move to the Leslie Lane public comment now?
Yes, if we will.
Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment with regard to the final assessment resolution on Leslie Lane in Avon. If you're here to speak to that issue, the same rules that we just discussed apply. I have no sign-ups. Is there someone here that would like to speak? That's fine, please raise your hand, come forward, come forward and state your name.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Larry Culpepper. I live, we own a property at 40187 Leslie Lane. We actually have water through a meter that, one of the spaghetti lines coming down about halfway of the property. Earlier this year, there was a hearing where it was presented that we would be paying to put in a water main and a fire hydrant, which we lack. I think it was $1,136 that was spread out over 10 years, which we are quite willing to do that for the benefit of the rest of the street. However, we got the letter a few months or so ago where the price went up about $4,000. And my wife and I are not willing to proceed on that basis. However, I do want to bring up one point, which is, when we got the original meter some 10 years ago, we did pay an impact fee. Now, my understanding of what an impact fee is, is that it's designed to cover costs of infrastructure and production equipment. And the only question I have is, why do we not have the infrastructure? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment on Leslie Lane this morning? Public comment from Buxton?
Yes, my first speaker is Jay Mastro.
Welcome, Mr. Mastro.
Thank you. My name is Jay Mastro. I live on Leslie Lane in Avon. Own the house there nearly 10 years. I, like Larry, have paid the hookup fee for the city water. Prior to that, we were on well water. Initially, I got the letter, same thing Larry said, the initial fee was going to be somewhere around $1,000. Now it's above $5,000. I can't afford that, to do that. We do have fire hydrants near, but the water pressure is lacking. I was on the petition initially to get the lines run down the street. $1,000 is kind of reasonable, but at $5,000, it's unaffordable for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Zach Watson.
Welcome, Mr. Watson.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Appreciate you all having us today. I, too, my wife and I live at 40189 Leslie Lane. A couple of things that have gone on, we know that we had the initial meeting, $1,135 approximately, to get the water line run down. Since then, we've received that letter. I'm redundantly speaking some information everybody's brought forth to you. A couple of questions and concerns that I want to bring today, after reviewing the last meeting that we had on February 19th. A couple of things captured my attention. One being, I'm under the understanding that it was Patterson was privately owned water company until the year 2000. Since then, 19 years ago, I'm sure since the county has taken over the responsibility for water and the water departments, since then done a great job in other parts of the county. I'm sure there's some upgrading that needs to be done, and it can't all be done at once. So we have what we call spaghetti lines. We all know this, they run from the meters at the highway, all the way down our street. So what we're all talking about here, and I'm just saying this to kind of clarify some concerns that I have, and I've since, Pat, talked to Mr., to Pat from the water company and Commissioner Couch, and kind of gotten an understanding about how things run. Well, it's been, there's been some confusion, first and foremost, about, have there been other places in the county where they've had to upgrade from what we call spaghetti lines to an actual main running down the street? And my answer in the past has been yes. Next is, has that cost been spread out to the taxpaying citizens that are going to be supplied that water from that infrastructure, that supply line going down? Or is that at times been absorbed by the county? My next question, and this is going to be a few questions, they don't all have to be individually asked or answered, these are just some concerns. If they have not been absorbed by the county and the taxpayers have paid, what has been the cost to theirs? So I'm kind of looking for some history of this same problem that's arisen in the past, and maybe some answers to, have other people been faced with this problem before? Just to get the same service as everybody else, which is a meter on our property that the county comes and puts in. My next, my next concern is, the last meeting, I believe it was at minute, 1 hour, 10 minutes, 20 seconds, there was, somebody had brought up that, is this already on the capital improvements, the capital improvements for the future? And the answer was, yes, 2024. This was actually going to be addressed in 2024 on the capital improvements list. And if so, if, let's say, we had not pressed the issue to actually try to get a water supply down our street sooner, would we, would we be burdened at that time for the cost of this water supply, which I believe it's a four-inch water main running down Leslie Lane? And if it was, if that's true, if it was on the capital improvements projects for 2024, maybe we could somehow meet in the middle, and if we weren't going to have to pay then, or that is something I want to be, or a question I need to have answered is, would we be expected to pay if we waited till the 2024 capital improvement projects? And if so, maybe we could meet in the middle and move that up, and would we still be burdened for the whole 100% of this cost? So I know I'm taking up time here, there's just been a lot of confusion about where we stand, and if we do not want to pay, but we still get a water main down the line, or down the street, are we going to be forced to pay those of us that don't want to pay the $5,500? So we don't want to pay $5,500 to have the same service that the rest of the county is being afforded by their regular annual taxes and cost of water. Thank you very much for your time. I hope that I haven't confused the issue here. I have a lot more I'd like to talk about, but maybe we can get some answers and all work together to resolve this issue of our water supply. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
My next speaker is Laurel Gropper.
Welcome. Can you repeat your name?
Laurel Gropper.
Thank you, Ms. Gropper.
Good morning, and I'm a homeowner with my husband here on 40177 Leslie Lane and 4079 Leslie Lane. So I'm going to echo and support Zach in a lot of his comments, and I don't want to be redundant. But a couple of things come to mind for me. Right now, we started out, and I was working very closely with Ken Flat, and we were given a preliminary estimate, as everyone has said, at 1136. But six months later, we get an estimate that's four times that, saying the project went from 25,000 to over $110,000. It seems, it's alarming, off-putting, but more than that, everyone on our block, we're not a rental block, we're homeowners, most of us, with fixed incomes and can afford that kind of expenditure. So the biggest question I have is, if you're putting in a fire hydrant, that seems like that would be distributed to maybe other payers be able to support in that, and that the whole onus or the whole burden of this project not be put on the homeowners? And I think that's something Zach is asking. We're confused how this is being handled and why others have not handled the, excuse me, the burden, and now we are. And what the funding is available, and are there grants available for this for people who can't expect to pay that? So one, it's something we would love to see happen, but again, there's confusion about this capital project in the future. And then the other thing is, you know, you can run a line down Leslie Lane for a whole lot less than this. So I, there's so many factors that are confusing, and I don't understand. Would love to have many questions answered and to see this project be executed. I think it's in the benefit of all the homeowners, and again, we also, like Brigand Bay, need a fire hydrant, and it would be a shame to lose as many houses that are on that block because we don't have that. So I appreciate your time. I support everything that everyone has raised, and I really wish this could go through. But it seems like there are lots of financial opposition and questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comment from Buxton.
Chairman, that would close the public hearing.
Yeah, let me, Mr. Watson, can you hear me? Did we, have we lost, is Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir.
You brought up some, some very good concerns and questions. Are you at liberty, or do you have available a list of those that you could certainly provide us with?
Yes, sir. Like a list of questions today?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's kind of chicken scratch, but actually, if I could maybe have an hour on my personal computer at home, I can, I can clean those up and type them out and send some concerns to, to you guys.
That'd be great, that'd be greatly appreciated. I appreciate if you could do that. And get us, get us, get us a copy of that.
Yes, sir. So just to clarify, that's just the questions that we all have, that we might not have enough time to discuss today on the floor?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Just to clarify, you would like a list of the questions that we have concerning this that we might not have time to get to today? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I think today, aren't we going to, aren't we going to set an additional hearing on December the 2nd for the resolution and the actual preliminary assessment?
That depends, if you'd like, I could.
Yeah, yeah, if you will.
I'm going to answer some of his questions and sort of take you through this, and then we'll see where we are.
Mr. Watson, are you, the county manager's going to address that. Are you, are you hearing this?
Yes, sir. We're all hearing it right here. We've all remained, so we'll definitely be diligent listening today. If you have any other questions of us, feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Just to get, set the stage correctly, the water system is what's called an enterprise fund. The water system runs on its own, and it runs on the revenues that are generated by the water system. It's not paid for by the taxpayers, if you will, it doesn't come out of the tax base. If you're not on the water system, then you don't contribute anything to the water for anybody else in the county. If you are on the water system, then the money that is generated from the water system pays all the expenses of making the water and doing the things that we do in the water system. With that said, over time, as we developed our water system, it's been the developer's responsibility to put the water in. So when a subdivision is built and made, the developer puts in the water lines, puts in the fire hydrants, puts in all those kinds of things, and we then provide the water. They give us an easement to the infrastructure that they put in when they do the development, and then we begin and we provide the water and we provide the maintenance going forward. That's all paid for out of the water fund that's generated by the costs that we charge to have water. And so that's how the system works. There are subdivisions that were done that chose not to have water way back in the day, and when they did, they didn't have water, they used well water, and so we didn't provide them with water. Over time, as those subdivisions have wanted water, then the way that you do that is you put the water lines in, but you do this assessment mechanism to charge those folks for the water infrastructure and not charge all the other water users in the county for their infrastructures in those things. If you ask me, has there ever been a subdivision or a street that has had water put in where they weren't assessed? I can't say there never has been, never's a big word. I can recall one, and it was very small, and there were some other things that needed to be done, and it was incorporated into another project, but that's the only one I can think of in my tenure. And every other time that we've done this, we have in fact assessed the ultimate user on the street where we've done it. So we're following sort of what we've done in the past. I don't know, there was a question about the 2024 capital plan. I don't know, I don't recall that being in a capital plan. I don't recall us ever approving something where we said we were going to put that infrastructure. I don't recall us ever approving something where we said we were going to put that infrastructure in and pay for it. If it was in a capital plan, we were going to pay for it in '24, or they were going to assess in '24?
No, there was funds in 2025, but we weren't, it was going to be assessed.
Yeah, so if it was in the plan, then it was still going to be assessed. So that wouldn't have solved the problem with the assessment. The real hiccup in all this is the change in the cost of assessment. When Ken did the estimate back in February to try to give the folks some idea of what it would cost to do that, his number was the numbers that the gentleman quoted a minute ago. They were a lot, they were, you know, $4,000 cheaper. That was an estimate. What he had done is he'd gone out and taken another project and said it costs this much a foot and applied that to this and said, here we go, and this is what, this is our estimated cost. The number that we're using now, we went out in order to prepare for this and actually had it bid out on the open market. And we had two bidders come in, and this was the low bid. And so the actual cost to do this project is the $5,000 number that is out there. So if we're going to do it, somebody's got to pay that. And so what we've done is we've done the assessment process like we've done in past water extensions, pass that along to those that are on the street where the water extension goes in. And that's what it would cost to do that. There are some people that are on the system that have paid impact fees. And to the extent that they've paid those fees, they don't have to pay those twice. But they do have to pay the cost to put the lines in the ground and do the work if we follow through with the assessment. To make this assessment more palatable and easier for the people to afford, we used a seven-year amortization is what we suggested that they be able to pay it. We picked that number because we've used that number in the past. I'll tell you that the board, when we picked that for the Run Oak Island assessment, because of some concerns that came up at this stage of the process, the board extended that time to 10 years. And so those folks had three additional years to pay for that cost. I think the statute won't allow you to go past 10. And so that is an alternative that's out there available to you. So that's sort of the history of where we are, how we get there, how these things are done. Have I misstated anything, Pat? Is that correct?
No, everything.
Okay. So that's where we are. I don't know if that answered all of his questions, but that sets the stage for where we are. I'll tell you that when we sent this out in the beginning to ask that the people in that subdivision, if they wanted this, there were, it was 12 no's, eight in favor, and two in favor, but they weren't sure they were going to pay. So it was split in the community when we decided to go forward. If you add these four to the 12 that we had before, now you have 16 no. You would only have four in favor, or six in favor. And so you've got a large cross-section of the community that doesn't want to go forward at this cost based on the numbers that we have. And so your choices then become several. One is we can stop and just not do the project because the people on Leslie Lane requested this of us. They're now telling us they can't afford to pay for it, the cost that it takes to do that. So we have the option to say, okay, then we won't do it if that's not what you want. Our second option is to move forward and say, we're going to put the water in, and here's what it costs. You know, our third option is, you know, do we somehow subsidize the cost of putting this in out of the water fund and let the total water fund pay some or all of this cost? And those are choices that you have. If you choose to go forward with the assessment, then we need to approve the assessment resolution that you have in front of you today, and we'll move forward in that process. If you're not going to do that, then we can put the assessment resolution to bed. Or if you're going to somehow subsidize it, oh, we assess them the initial amount or half, and then we cover the difference, then so be it. Knowing that if you do that, then the next street that we have to go down, then we're going to have changed what we've done historically and say that we're going to start subsidizing these costs. So that's where we are. Those are the choices that you have. And so with that, you need to decide how to move forward today. One option you have is to do nothing and get more input if you think you need that to make a better decision.
Does the board have any questions? First of all, Mr. Watson, I'm hopeful that you heard these comments from the county manager and answered some of your questions. Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir. I definitely have a couple answers to my questions. I think a couple of these questions that I had, they're like a multi-level answer because we need to look into the history of maybe what's happened when there's had to be repairs, and the citizens had to incur those fees. So there's a lot, I feel like there's a lot more we could discuss. I did get some answers. Thank you, sir, for those.
And actually, your question just then, I mean, if, once the system's in, it's ours, and then the repairs are on the system, they don't go back to the product. The initial cost to the property owners to put in a system historically has been assessed. Once that's done, it's our system, and the system pays the cost to keep and maintain it going forward. You don't go back and assess anybody after that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Yes, sir?
Thank you. I was just, I was curious, subdivision keeps coming up. I didn't realize that Leslie Lane was considered a subdivision. That's my fault for not going to look at the definitions on the county website. I'll definitely look into that. I didn't realize that we were actually in a subdivision. I thought we were just a county road, or a state-owned county road. That was a little confusion, too, that I didn't bring up. But I don't know how this works. I don't want to take up any more time. I know there's a lot of things on the floor, so, yeah.
No, we're, Mr. Watson, we're fine. We'll take as much time this morning. This is important, and we'll certainly take as much time as needed. Any of my fellow commissioners have any questions of the county manager?
I have a suggestion.
I do, too, but I'll hear yours first.
My suggestion would be for us to do nothing.
Right.
And to allow Pat and I to go down and meet with the folks on Leslie Lane, talk about costs, talk about timing, try to get some feel for how they want to go forward, and then come back to you where we can assess their, I mean, again, we're doing this because they requested it from us. And so we need to figure out how to do this in a way that makes it work for them and present those alternatives to you.
County manager, great minds think alike. I had that very thought. I said, I don't want to move on this this morning out of respect for these folks down there. That is a huge difference for them. And we need to sit down and show them the respect that they're due and see if we can't work this out and find a solution. So that would, and hopefully, folks, that you folks will agree with that. The, I don't know, do we need that in a motion, in a form of a motion, county manager, or just a direction from the board?
Just give us that direction, and then I'll have Pat make contact, and he and I'll go down there and meet with them on Hatteras so they don't have to travel.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner.
Great minds, here comes a feeble mind. But what Ms. Elhoff had to say about Treasure Court, I'm personally aware of a very serious issue with that. Can we bring them into the table as well and take care of two birds with a stone here?
I don't mind bringing them to the table and having a discussion with them. I think we've got two different kinds of issues.
Yeah, it's two different issues.
Bring them together. But, I mean, we've got another policy to make decision to make with regard to those fire hydrants. This is the first I've heard of it this morning, and I, Pat and I need to have some discussion before I can give you more information on that.
It's not good from a public safety standpoint, Treasure Court. That's what I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So did we have a consensus from the board that, all right, absolutely. Folks in Buxton, you still there?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Watson. You're looking sharp there this morning with all them fine-looking people behind you. Are you folks comfortable with this decision and us moving so we can maybe work this out and sit down and see how we can make this work better for you guys?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. We'll, county manager will be in touch, and we'll see you sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all.
I do have one question. On this plat for Leslie Lane is putting one fire hydrant about halfway down the street, where is the closest fire hydrant to Leslie Lane currently?
It's on NC-12.
On NC-12, and that's on the opposite side of the road, right?
Yes, it'll be east, yes.
So if they had a house fire in there, we'd have to block off.
You got it, closes, yes.
Okay.
All right. I think we, I think y'all have your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us back up to item six on the agenda. We have Sheila Davies and others here this morning, Rebecca Wood, Kelly Netten, to talk to you about Talk About Mental Health Initiative for Suicide Prevention.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning. Happy to see everyone. You may recall back in September, we were before you, and this board adopted the proclamation declaring September a Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And specifically Chairman Woodard and Vice Chairman Oberman helped serve as champions to kick off the Talk About Mental Health campaign. So we're happy to be back before you this morning. We want to share a brief video that captures some of the work that was done under the Talk About Mental Health Initiative back in September. And then after the video, I want to introduce a couple of staff members that are going to tell you about some great work that's happening under the Breaking Through Task Force. That's an initiative to help address the stigma associated with mental health. So we'll roll the video, and then I'll come back. It's just a short video.
Dare County is home to about 4,000 veterans. That's 4,000 citizens who have faithfully served our country.
Wrong video.
We have two presentations this morning, so... If we need to, we could switch and do the veterans' presentation first. If we, I don't know if that affects your agenda, these two items are back-to-back. It would give us a couple of minutes to get the...
Yeah, they're back-to-back.
Okay, do you mind if we do that?
I'm fine if that's the route you prefer to go.
And then we can get the video loaded for this presentation.
Absolutely. I'll tell you what, Sheila, we'll take a five-minute break while we get the technical problems worked out.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Sounds great. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. So I will now introduce to you the Talk About Mental Health video. Thank you. So it was a very successful campaign in spreading words of hope and encouragement throughout the community. I would like to welcome Kelly Netten. She's our Public Information Officer with the Health and Human Services, as well as our communications specialist. She put this video together, as well as Rebecca Woods. She is the Health Education Supervisor with the Public Health Division. These ladies co-chair the Breaking Through Task Force, and are going to tell you a little bit about the work of the task force and more about this initiative. Thank you.
Welcome, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Good work, ladies. Thank you all for being here this morning.
As you all were able to see, the campaign was very successful. And on behalf of the Breaking Through Task Force and the Adult Collaborative for Mental Health and Substance Abuse in Dare County, we'd like to extend our gratitude to you for your support. The campaign caught on very quickly. And in our community's usual fashion, it was welcomed and embraced. We were able to complete the entire campaign for under $100 with hundreds of individuals participating. We've already started planning next year's campaign, and we're excited to share we will be extending it to include a variety of opportunities to bring awareness to suicide prevention. Anyone who's interested in participating can email info@breakthestigmaobx.com. And I just wanted to note that this project is one of many that the Breaking Through Task Force is working on to eliminate stigma related to mental health. We're working on establishing a website that will serve as a hub for mental health information and support in Dare County. We would like to encourage you to visit breakthestigmaobx.com. You can sign up to receive an email alert when that website goes live. And now I'm going to have my co-chair, Rebecca. She's going to share more with you about suicide and mental health in Dare County.
Thank you, Kelly. Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you. Historically, mental health has been a topic that many have been uncomfortable talking about. But as we know, simply not addressing an issue does not make it go away. According to the last Community Health Needs Assessment, death by suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in Dare County, in North Carolina. I'm sorry. In Dare County, death by suicide is the eighth leading cause of death. I bring attention to the statistics to point to out the need for conversations and the need for action. You all, as the Dare County Board of Commissioners, have, through approving the motion to proclaim this past September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, have taken a huge step in addressing the stigma that exists around mental health and around specifically suicide. We know talking about suicide is uncomfortable. But for the health of our citizens, we have to have these uncomfortable conversations. Sometimes in our work, we don't know the impact of our actions. I feel very blessed to have been present for many of these CHOC projects. I saw adults and children writing messages of encouragement. I listened to stories about how some have been personally impacted by suicide. I listened to stories about how some have been personally impacted by suicide. Please know that this project has made a difference for our citizens. I assure you that endorsing this project has had positive impacts on so many Dare County residents. The Dare County Department of Health and Human Services and the Breaking Through Task Force are not stopping here. We're dedicated to eliminating the stigma attached to seeking supports for mental health. We will provide education to our young people and adults on mental health. Education breaks down barriers and it spurs action. We know our work is cut out for us, but we are up for the challenge. And we really thank you all for your willingness to endorse such an impactful project. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you Rebecca.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on our agenda. And Patty O'Sullivan here, our Veterans Coordinator, is here to make the presentation and an update about Veterans Affairs.
Good morning Patty.
Good morning. I just, I have a slide presentation, but I was just going to speak a little bit beforehand and then if anybody had any questions. Good morning. I'm Patty O'Sullivan, I'm the Dare County Veterans Services Officer. My primary job is to meet with veterans and help them get the benefits they may be entitled to through the Veterans Administration. I do this through appointments in my office, on occasion walk-ins. And if a veteran is disabled or unable to come to my office, I go to the veterans' home wherever it is in Dare County. I help them file claims through the VA and enroll them in healthcare. Since I started, I've become accredited with the VA. This was a detailed process which involved a background check, fingerprinting at Fort Bragg, and ending with the issuing of a PIV, Personal Identity Verification Card, which allows me direct access to the VA's benefit computer system. This also requires me to go throughout the year to training to earn education credits so I can keep my credentials active. This year alone, I've met with over 200 veterans or their dependents and spoken with over 500, helping them file disability claims, pension claims, healthcare enrollment, or survivor benefits, among other things. I'm also actively involved in all veteran community events and organizations such as the Blue Star Mothers, of which I'm a member, the VFW, the American Legion, and the Veterans Advisory Council. I volunteered at the Seafood Festival, the Hatteras Veterans Breakfast, the VFW's poppy distribution, and Veterans Day memorial services, among other things. The following slides explain in more detail what benefits veterans and their dependents may qualify for through the VA. So. There they are. So this next slide. The first one, I talk about healthcare. A veteran may qualify to get VA healthcare if benefits that they served in the active military, naval, or air service, and didn't receive a dishonorable discharge. This is an income-based benefit unless their service connected. This next slide talks about the Community Care Program. Veterans may be eligible to receive care from a community provider when the VA cannot provide the care needed. The care is provided on behalf of and paid for by the VA. Community care is available to veterans based on certain conditions and eligibility requirements. Community care must be first authorized by the VA before a veteran can receive care from a community provider. Because we're located more than 40 miles from the VA healthcare facility, veterans in Dare County are eligible for the Community Care Program.
Patty, can we go back to that first bullet? In the previous slide? Veterans may be eligible to receive care from a community provider when the VA cannot provide the service. Do we have any data on that in our veterans in Dare County, our 4,000 veterans in Dare County? Do we have any data on that that has potentially had that issue and?
Well, this is actually a brand-new program.
Right.
They just started it.
Yeah.
So as far as, you mean, how many are actually being seen by the VA?
No, I'm talking about that, that has not been able to, to take advantage of the VA providing that. And they've had to go to a community care physician to, to get the service that they need.
That, I would have to see if I could get that for you, that exact number. But I do know that because, if there's more than a four-week waiting period, that the VA will offer them the community care and because it's right here.
Did you say four day?
Four, four week. If there's more than a four-week wait, I'm sorry, for the veteran to have to go to the VA, then they offer them the Community Care Program, which the veteran likes anyway because it's closer to home. And then they don't, Elizabeth City's the closest to the clinic.
It's the closest that we have, right?
Right.
Okay.
So they seem to like that better.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be anxious to follow that data as it goes on. I know it's new, but being a veteran, I'd like to certainly be aware of what's taking place down the road in the future with, with our fellow veterans in Dare County. If you'll maybe put that on your radar to collect some data.
All right, not a problem, I can do that.
I'd like to ask one question on that too, real quick. So someone comes to you and he's a veteran and he needs services. How long is it going to take from the time that he applies? It says here, "Community care is available to veterans based on conditions of eligibility or requirements." And they must be authorized first by the VA. So from the time he goes to you and says, "I need help," how long before they get their authorization so we can go to a community care?
Okay, if the veteran has, to enroll them in VA, that does, that's, probably it takes them about three weeks to get them in the system because they have to verify everything. If they are approved for veterans' healthcare and it's an emergency, then they can, they have the choice to go to Hampton, but they can also go to the Outer Banks Hospital. But as far as if they can get specialized service, they'd have to get the approval through their primary care doctor and that could take like a couple of weeks. But if it, like, were an emergency or if it were something to go to Outer Banks, urgent care now accepts community care as well. So if they wake up and they're sick and they don't have to worry about going through their primary care VA because they're so backed up. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
But yeah, it's probably, it's probably about three weeks to get them through the enrollment process. And then once they can get in the, if, once they're approved, then they should be able, if I can get them in community care first, that gets some quicker service than going through the VA. Unfortunately, they are super backlog. But that's for the healthcare. I mean, the claims are backlog too, but anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty critical. I, I'd really encourage you to follow that data. Knowing the history of the, you know, no disrespect, but knowing the history of the VA. You know, that, that data is critical.
Also, if you got, they just did a presentation on suicides on that banks. You've come at 8%.
Right.
We need to make sure they have the ability to get services when they need it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, like I said, the community care is better because they can get their service quicker than they could waiting to hear back from the actual appointment in Elizabeth City. Okay.
So I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation.
No, that's okay, your question.
It's critical enough that our citizens, our veterans certainly need to know the details.
Okay. Like I said, I always tell them if they have any questions or sometimes if they hit a block or, I mean, a stumbling block, I try to help them. It's hard with the healthcare because it's all, all the HIPAA that's involved with it. They don't really, my access is really on the benefit side because the VA is made up of three sections. There's the benefits, there's the healthcare, and then there's cemetery.
Right.
And my computer access is only on the benefit side. And I have my special help lines if I wanted to call. But healthcare, they won't talk to me at all unless I have the veteran in the office. But sometimes I'm able to get through and kind of nag them a little bit. See like, well, you know, can he, is he getting, is he enrolled? He's not getting his phone call for his appointment. So I do try to do that as much as possible. And I let them know to give me a call and I'll try to see if I could nudge them a little bit to get them set up. Okay. Okay, now we're up to claims. Service connection is the relationship of a particular disabling condition to the veteran's service. This is accomplished by showing that the condition began during service, which is known as direct or secondary, or that a pre-existing condition was made permanently worse than it would have been otherwise, which is known as aggravation, or by certain statutory presumptions, which is presumptive. Service connection disability compensation is a tax-free monthly monetary benefit payable for service-connected disabilities. Compensation rates are not income-based, but are determined by the level of impairment in accordance with the VA's schedule of rating disabilities. There are 11 possible levels of disability assignable for any condition from 0 to 100% in 10% increments. The veteran's age is not considered in this determination and certain percentages are awarded additional benefits, such as 30% rating would allow dependents. The next claim is pension. Pension is a monthly payment to a veteran who has served honorably during the Mexican border period, World War I, World War II, the Korean Conflict, the Vietnam Era, or the Persian Gulf War, and his or her surviving spouse and dependent children. Pension may be payable to a veteran who is permanently and totally disabled as a result of a non-service-connected disability and pension eligibility is an income-based benefit. Survivor's pension is the income supplement program for a low-income surviving spouse and/or child of a veteran. The basic requirements are wartime service, income and net worth within specified limits, and the veteran's death was not related to service. Dependency and indemnity compensation, also known as DIC, is a monthly payment made to a surviving spouse, child, or parent because of a service-connected death. DIC is payable under any of the following circumstances. Service member dies while on active duty. Veteran dies directly from service-connected disability or if a service-connected disability contributed substantially to the death or death occurs while receiving medical treatment at a Veterans Health Administration facility. And then some of the other benefits I'm able to help them with are the veteran license plates, their separation paperwork, which are known as their DD-214s, their military records, awards and medals, burial benefits, education and training enrollment assistance, and home loan qualifications. So if anybody has any other questions?
Any, any questions of Patty on the board?
Just glad to see that our veterans are getting some personal attention.
Absolutely. Patty, thank you for what you do. I know you work very, very hard for our veterans. And I appreciate you coming this morning and sharing with us.
It's my pleasure.
Some stats. And we look, look forward to hearing from you in the near future again.
Okay, if anybody has, refer any veterans to me if they have any questions. I'm always around and happy to help them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, that moves us to item nine on the agenda. And Lee Mettles is here to request the board's consent for an expenditure from their Long-Term Restricted Fund.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Lee.
Board of Commissioners. It's a pleasure to come for you today. I come for you today to request your consent on an expenditure of 3.15 million from the Dare County Tourism Board Long-Term Restricted Fund Line Item 4525. These dollars will allow us to purchase contiguous property located to the north of the Soundside Event Site in Nags Head. The purchase will add to the available parking for current events and provide immediate indoor space for events. But it will also allow us the opportunity to give full consideration to a consultant's recommendation of developing a larger indoor event venue for the Outer Banks. Currently, we're limited to 400 people indoors, 800 people at the, at the Pirates Cove Pavilion. The consultant's report would have indoor space from anywhere from 500 to potentially 2,000 people. Catering to entertainment, concerts, sporting events, conferences, consumer shows, meetings, and other indoor community events. We believe that a facility of this type is needed on the Outer Banks. It's something that we're missing and it'll allow us to satisfy our mission of trying to grow the less-than-peak months, shoulder season and off-season months. I would welcome any questions.
Absolutely, Lee. Is any questions on the board, Lee?
I have some questions.
I do too, thank you. Commissioner Tobin, go for it, bro.
Okay. The Tourism Bureau currently owns seven parcels in the immediate vicinity. Five adjacent parcels on the west side where you're talking about the event center and the event site is, and the two that are directly across the street. I went on the Dare County website, on the GIS website, and brought up some of the tax information on those properties. And what I came up with is those, those seven parcels are worth 7.39 million dollars. Is that about right, do you know?
Well, the, altogether, it's, it's more than that.
So, and with an additional 3.1 million added to it with this new parcel, we'd be north of $10 million, correct?
That's correct.
For land. If it was the private industry doing this, that's about $70,000 a month in financing you'd have to have of payments for, for that number. That's a lot of money. And I'm just wondering if in the pro forma that was done, when you extrapolate that out, I know the gentleman earlier in public comments said over 10 years, you were going to have a $250,000 loss over that 10-year period. Is that correct?
No, not exactly. The, I think what the gentleman was referring to was the projected operating expense and income. And the center is projected to show a deficit of about $250,000 on the operating budget annually. And that expense would be covered wholly by the Dare County Tourism Board and the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau. The other part of that equation though, and typically centers such as this do lose money, they're expected to lose money. The reason that you move forward with them, if the Tourism Board, if the county commissioners so choose to, to take that avenue, is the direct spending of $12 million and upwards of 20 million annually that happens as a result of the events and the people that are coming in and the vendors and the different spending that's taking place.
Now, who came up with those figures?
That's also from the consultant's report.
Okay.
And, and I should point out that, that the event site, the event center, the, the final scope and scale of that remains to be seen. We, we've received a consultant's recommendation on the size that it ought to be to try and attract these different groups. But it's conceivable that it wouldn't be as large as what has been recommended.
Okay. In the past two days, I've spoken with both the mayor of Nags Head and one of the other commissioners who kind of wanted to remain anonymous. And they, in the initial purchase of the initial property, were partners with you guys and still are partners with you guys in the amount of 2.1 million or thereabouts.
That's correct.
Neither one could remember the exact amount. I know that they've requested to be paid back for that money. Are there any plans and you think that should take priority? Or what, what are the plans on payback or are there plans?
The Tourism Board has discussed that at length and I, and I think that it's the, the interest and the intent of the Tourism Board to, to buy out their interest in that property. Obviously, we've got some big ticket items going right now. The, the property, Pamela Cojacks' property, not the least of which, but also a boardwalk project that we would hope to construct along the Soundside to encourage use. But I, I think that the Tourism Board is interested in, in satisfying the town's interest and purchasing out their interest in the, in the original site.
Okay, thank you. And my last question. We currently have five event sites that are publicly slash state-owned and compete with the private sector in this area. Roanoke Island Festival Park, the Elizabethan Gardens, the Aquarium, Jeanette's Pier, and the Visitors Bureau Event Site. Basically, they're all right here in the Nags Head, Roanoke Island area. Do you feel that these government agencies and facilities should be competing for business with the private sector in, in that amount? We don't have that many event centers that are privately owned. And I, I just feel that it's almost going overboard by the state and, and these, these agencies putting these. it's almost going overboard by the state and these agencies putting these facilities up.
We take great care to consider how we price and how we rent the site currently, and I'm sure that we'll give that same consideration and care so that we don't undercut or, you know, try to exert any undue or unfair advantage in using the site. We are charged legislatively to try and grow the shoulder seasons and the off-seasons in particular, and to try and produce tourism impact for the area and create those close to 14,000 jobs and the 3.1 or the 1.3 billion tourism expenditures, and trying to offset people's taxes by close to $3,000 per resident per year. So, we have to do, we have to give careful consideration and try and achieve that balance where we're not unduly competitive, but we are still satisfying our mission.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Lee, I got a couple, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The, are there any plans to look at expanding even further north, other than the Pamlico Jacks, in purchasing additional property?
We haven't had any discussion to that extent, and I would say that this decision, this pursuit, was prompted just by the understanding that Mr. Kelly was interested in selling that property. We were considering plans for potentially developing an event center on the current property that we own, but, you know, the, just understanding how scarce that property and how special that property is, the board thought it best to pursue it, and that that investment is a solid investment regardless of what happens with any future development. But no, there haven't been any discussions beyond Pamlico Jacks.
Okay. I think we all know that there's currently an issue with parking when we have events there. Any plans to demo the DQ and to make room for that rather sooner rather than later? Or is that, I know that you're using part of that building for the, I guess...
Rope Course?
Yeah, for the rope course, but is, are there any plans to, sooner rather than later, to make room so that you can increase the parking there?
So, that, the purchase of that property does add 60 spaces to what we currently had on the other portion of the event site. We do share some of that parking with the Adventure Rope Course. They're a long-term tenant of the Tourism Board. As you mentioned, we do have, as part of that rental contract, an agreement that we would need to provide a certain amount of retail space for their operation, their business, but it doesn't designate where that has to be located. I would expect that we will quickly get into conversation, and I should point out, by the way, that the Tourism Board has appointed an advisory committee, an eight-person advisory committee with various representatives, one of which being Commissioner Ross. And I'm sure that we'll immediately look at not only how best to connect those sites if you should offer your consent on Pamlico Jacks, but also how to get the best immediate use out of that facility. It's an 11,000-square-foot facility, so taking a look at that and seeing how far down the road we could get potentially with just modifications to the existing site, which is already, folks are used to seeing that, and I know that the sound views are so important to everyone. Pamlico Jacks has been there for quite a while, so if we were able to just kind of modify and work off of that building, then, you know, you're not interfering with at least the sound views anymore. Pamlico Jacks, of course, offers another 125 parking spaces currently.
Gotcha. And I know, had some discussion about the advisory board, so that has been put in place, is that correct now?
Yes, sir.
And they will be, they will be looking at your consultants, looking at what they've recommended, and I know it's, this is long-term, so they'll be reporting back to your board periodically with respects to their findings and their recommendations?
Yes, we have our first meeting coming up in a week or so, and it's an eight-person advisory committee with representatives from the Dare County Commissioners, the Visitors Bureau, Town and Naggs Head, Hotel Motel Association, and then we have three at-large appointments as well. So, yes, that'll be the working group that'll roll up their sleeves and really get in there and, you know, kick the tires on the numbers that we got from consultants, where we've had previous consultant reports before, and, you know, you have to put them through the lens of just our own experiences with the destination and not wanting to take on any undue risk. That's how we got to establishing it as an event site for at least a period of 10 years. We hired the consultant to kind of help us reshape that longer-term view, and I believe that the report is an important part of that, and that this property purchase is also an important step forward.
Well, I'm pleased that you'll accept Commissioner Ross on that advisory board. If there's anybody that can tweak the numbers, he can, so I'm happy that he's agreed to serve on that advisory board. And then certainly the last thing I have, that's respect to purchasing the property and the funding. You purchase that through the Visitors Bureau's occupancy funds that they receive, is that not correct?
Yes, it's wholly funded through the Dare County Tourism Board's Long-Term Restricted Fund, so those are all visitor taxes, and there's no financing involved.
Thank you, Lee. I appreciate it. Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Nettles?
How many events are currently done at the event site the way it is right now per year?
Right now, this most recent year, we've had, I think, 11 events, but about 29,000 attendees over the course of those, and we've shown growth for the different years. And certainly, you know, one thing that we believe is a big limitation is just not having that indoor space, because it puts all the risk on the event developer. They got to bring in all the infrastructure with tents, and then ultimately, they're rolling the dice with the weather.
And how many events do you propose that you'd be having on an annual basis with the building?
The consultant's report, I believe, as mentioned by the gentleman earlier, has about 150 annual events, five years in. Of course, with a building, that building is, can be subdivided into different configurations and that kind of thing, so you're able to host multiple events, simultaneous events, and so that kind of thing, different sizes.
Okay. So, how big is this building that you're looking at doing?
Well, I would say that that remains to be seen, but I can tell you that the consultant's recommendation, at least, was for 30,000 net usable.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a large building, and that's certainly something that the advisory committee, I know, but certainly the Tourism Board's going to take under consideration. It's that trade-off of maximizing the opportunity, but at the same time, you know, we don't want, we don't want whatever we would develop there to be unsuccessful, so...
Right.
Trying to figure out where that balance is and what makes best sense for our community.
In this building, it would not be a part of, would not be like a hotel or anything like that? Or is that in the plan, or? I'm just trying to get the full picture of...
Sure. Yeah. The consultant's report had three recommendations or three options that they considered. Two of them included a hotel from the private sector, but all three of those recommendations included an event center of the size that I described, and when asked specifically, "Does an event center need to or have to have a hotel in order to be economically viable", the consultant said no, that that event center stands on its own.
Right. So, if it were, I'm sorry, but if it were to have, say, eventually, you say, "Yeah, we're going to put a hotel on there," so that would be a private partner, a private firm coming in and...
A private-public partnership of some kind. And at this point, the Tourism Board hasn't even taken that topic under, we haven't, we haven't talked about it. We felt like that there were enough things to do, the boardwalk project, the pursuit of the property, the event center, that there was enough value and enough merit in those directions, that we had enough to do with those.
Yeah, because these are questions that I've been getting from citizens across the county, you know, of, you've got a good plan, but is it thoroughly thought out? And obviously, no, because we're still in the working process of it. But also, not only with the hotel part of it, but also doing the restaurant part of it, or doing a food service out of it, would that also be a private-public partnership, or would that be totally?
We wouldn't continue to operate it as a restaurant. The building with the kitchen facility would be, would serve as, at least, as an interim event center function, so, you know, catered events and that kind of thing. So, it's, I'm not sure if I'm answering the question.
No, I think, okay. So, that's all.
I think the vice chairman had some questions.
Lee, I want to thank you. Having served on the Tourism Board for the last several years, I know how much effort and how much thought has gone into any of these purchases of property over there. It has been done methodically with a great deal of thought put into it, bringing Johnson in to do some professional studies and make their suggestions, which is basically what they are, and the establishment of the advisory committee that will pour through these, and with Rob on there, I guarantee you, it's going to be done with a microscope. It's a great way to go. I hate to be rotating off of it next month, but that's, I've done my time, I guess you could say. But we want to thank you for the hard work that you've put into this and for the work that I know the Tourism Board will do going forward. There are going to be five or so, maybe seven, new members coming on to the Tourism Board here in the coming year, and that's going to present another challenge that I'm sure you will work through. But I did want to say thank you for the very methodical, very hard-studied work that you have done on all of this, but thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? With that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
So, motion on the floor to approve Dare County Tourism Request Consent Expenses for the Long-Term Restricted Fund, Line Item 4525, from Vice Chairman Overman, I believe Commissioner Bateman seconded. Floor is open for further discussion.
I want to say this. I guess it's been, what, eight years ago? When was the property from the?
That was, wow, the original property was in 2008, I guess.
Okay, all right. So, this has been like a plan, a long-range plan. Just from my personal standpoint as a business owner, we need to continuously make the Outer Banks something for people to come and do. That means events, that means in the wintertime, December, January, February, March, when there's nothing here, we can have a barber's convention, we can have a doctor's convention, we can have groups come in and display their wares and sell things, and it generates terrorism, it generates people going to restaurants, eating out, going and spending money, economical impact. That's the long range of what I'm looking at, that I think this can be beneficial. Do I want to go into complete allocating money for acquisition of property? No, but this is something that in long term is the best thing for Dare County, and that's the way I'm looking at this thing. The other thing is, I'm just going to tell you, and I hope that your board can look at this, is there's been a plan on the backburner for about five years that I was a part of to do a boardside boardwalk on the Soundside. You're now, if this passes, you'll be the largest linear property owner in the town of Naggs Head. That is something that, if you go to Duck at 6 o'clock in the morning, which I was down there on Saturday, riding the bike, the place was packed, people drinking coffee, people walking with their families, which is what the Outer Banks is about. We need that in Naggs Head. And being the property owner there, this is something I think the Terrorists Bureau needs to strongly look at, that economic development there, and it's all part of the big package, so that somebody can come down there and not only go to an event there, but also walk along a boardwalk, family things, which is what makes the Outer Banks what it is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Agreed completely. Anyone else?
I just, I think we're looking down the road, and, you know, it's not that difficult to see going into the future. The Tourism Board has spent a lot of years building our brand, and it is built, and we are in demand, and I think with the generations coming up, this is something we can do for them. This is not a static, kids, the kids that are coming up, their vacation ideals, their means of traveling are not what ours is. It used to be mom, dad, and the grandkids and stuff. Now, a lot of these guys are looking at short-term stuff. I think our Tourism Board is addressing the future needs of the Outer Banks as a region. I'm on board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say one final thing. I'm really not opposed to getting this land, because I understand what that site is meant for. The problem I have is we haven't seen any site plans, we haven't seen any, we as a board have not seen your pro forma, we've not seen, the next time you come here, I want to see all that stuff. I want to see the exact numbers, and, you know, I know the hotel and restaurant associations couldn't be real thrilled that you're talking about possibly a hotel and once again competing, but if it is truly a private entity that's doing it in a public-private partnership, that's a little bit easier to swallow. So, if it is a public-private partnership at some point, it makes a little bit more sense. My problem with the whole concept is if it's not a public-private partnership, then once again, we got the government in there trying to run what private industry normally does, and I do truly have an issue with that.
I would, too. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? With that being said, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much, Lee.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item 10 on the agenda. Greta Skene-Hosey-Wilson from our Tax Assessment Department are here to present the 2020 Schedule Standards and Rules for Property Appraisal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's see why you need to use these. The document that you have that we are presenting today is the 2020 Schedule Standards and Rules for Real Property Appraisal. It outlines the methods and procedures used to value all types of real property in the county for the upcoming 2020 revaluation, and that will be effective January 1, 2020. The data in this manual has been compiled based on several years of local market review and research. It contains narratives detailing procedures for valuation of land and improved properties. It includes tables, base rates, ranges, adjustment criteria, and methodology which our appraisers are using as guidelines for appraising each property in the county. Appraisal judgment is a necessary part of property valuation, and this document helps us apply procedures uniformly, and it also helps us ensure equity in our assessments. We have a staff of 12 in the appraisal department. 10 of those are certified real property appraisers. Our computer-aided mass appraisal software calculates and stores the data for all of our real property parcels. So, right now, in the county, we have about 43,500 real property parcels. Of those, 90% are residential, 5% are commercial, 5% are exempt. Of our taxable properties, about 15% are vacant, and the remainder are improved. So, we are reviewing each and every property for this revaluation, including exempt properties. For public review, we will have an electronic copy of the schedule available on the county website. website. We have a hard copy available in our office, and then one at the Fessenden Center. So, today, we are presenting this for your review and requesting that you set a public hearing for your next meeting on November 18th. These dates will meet the statutory requirements that we have for presenting the schedule. Then there'll be the notice, and that meets the notice period for the public hearing. And also, there'll be the adoption, we're requesting that you adopt the schedule at your December 2nd meeting, and that will meet the requirements that the schedule is adopted prior to January 1st. After the adoption, there is also a 30-day period for appeals. We plan to send notices in mid-February, and prior to sending notices, we'll have another, come to you with another meeting that we will present the results of the revaluation at that time. So, Hosey and I are here if you have any questions concerning the schedule or the revaluation process.
I have one question, and this is not a question from me, but I've been approached probably by half a dozen people that said that the reevaluations already, people have already been out on the street going to properties and reevaluating already.
Yes.
And I just, I didn't know the answer, so.
Right.
I figured they had, because it's a pretty big process.
Yes.
But I told them that I knew this was coming up, and I'd get the answer for sure. So, thank you.
Yes, we have.
We started the process in 2017.
I figured.
So, we're, and we'll be continuing to work up until the first of the year, and then at that point, our values are established as of January 1 of 2020, and then our notices will go out, because it takes quite a bit of time to finalize all of our final values and have our notices printed and mailed. So, we anticipate probably the second, third week in February with the valid notices.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to set a public hearing then on November the 18th, 29th?
So moved.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner House to set that public hearing.
They also have published the proposed schedule.
Yes, and published the proposed schedule. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Chairman, item 11 on the agenda is the consent agenda, and the only thing on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to approve the minutes. The 10/21/19 meeting has been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item 12 are your board appointments. You have the Health and Human Services Board. As you know, the statute requires the board to submit the names, and they submit the names of Tim Sharon at the at-large seat, and James Woodson, Dr. James Woodson is a dentist for the reappointment. The optometrist vacancy is to be filled. You have applications from Dr. Daniel L. Jones, Amber Jennings, George Carver, Jay State Martin, Alan Moran. The board forwards the name of Dr. Daniel L. Jones to fill the optometry vacancy.
Pleasure to the board.
Move to appoint Dr. Jones to the, for the vacancy to the optometrist, and the name of, and to Tim Sharon and Dr. James Woodson. Second.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And next is the older adult advisory councils. You have applications on file from Amber Jennings and Angelo Sinessa. The advisory board recommends Amber Jennings be appointed to fill the mainland vacancy.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve Amber Jennings as the new person on the older adult services council.
Thank you. Commissioner, motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then your upcoming appointments in December, you have the Equalization Review Board, there's five terms that expire, and also the Special Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Committee, which has three terms that expire. In January, you have the Tourism Board, seven terms expire there, and the Working Waterman Commission, where you have two terms that expire. And then in February, you have the Planning Board, where three terms expire. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that would be your agenda.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 13, Commissioner's Business Manager's Attorney's Business, and I'd like to ask Commissioner Tobin if he would kick that off today.
I'd be delighted to, thank you. Last week, we had a community advisory council meeting at the Baum Center. For those of you who don't know, we are a group that advocate for the residents at Spring Arbor and a Peak Resources Nursing Home. The meeting went really well. It's a board of, or a council of six people, but we've been missing two. And I'm real happy to announce that we have two members that have been through all the required training. One of the new members has also been through the required site service that they have to go through, and the only, once we get the other person, who's Bonnie Bennett, through the site presentation, then we'll be back up and running as a full board, which we're really excited about. Also, Bobby Outen, Harry Schiffman, Brent and myself went down to the quarterly MOA meeting in New Bern. It was a good meeting, basically talking about dredge spoil sites and some of the issues that are facing all the different counties here on the coast with their dredging issues. And then afterwards, instead of breaking bread with the Corps, we went and we broke Hush Puppies at Morris Barbecue with the Corps and had a real good informal meeting with them, and just really good to have a kind of off-the-record informal sit-down discussion, and it was, went really, really well. And that's all I got.
If the Hush Puppies worked, keep on doing it.
It was awesome. That place is great.
Commissioner House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things we've got going on with the fisheries. The North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission and the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission held an exercise in conjunction with respect to joining fishing waters to make designation of what's an inland waterway and what's a coastal waterway. But they had two particular meetings with that and co-injunction with that, and then it was kind of put to rest, and then all of a sudden, the Wildlife Resources Commission has formally put out a proposal, and it has met with quite a bit of resistance due to several issues that are involved with it. I do plan on having a Waterman's Commission meeting either later this week or next week to discuss these findings and to get a little bit better input to bring something before this board with all the definite ins and outs of it. It's a very moving, a very intricate issue with a lot of different moving parts, that it looks like it would entail quite a few different interpretations and different, and actually, the way that's actually written would actually entail also possibly changing a few of the laws in North Carolina as well. So, we're going to dive into that and get a better consensus, something that's more digestible for all of us as a group to come forward with, and we look at having that one at our next meeting. Also, with the, recently, we had a meeting with the National Cemetery Byways Commission, and very interesting things coming down in the future for that as well. We'll keep you abreast of that. We're looking at several different issues, mainly on the hatteras end of it, and looking at some possibly in the near future, some public comment issues for that too. So, it's very exciting what's going on there. It's definitely moving forward, and look forward to seeing what entails with that. I've got two things on history that I wanted to bring up as today in our history. As we all know, the turmoils in the Middle East have gone on for quite some time, and I actually had a discussion with a younger person this past week who was thinking that the trouble in the Middle East was something that was current, has only started like in the past 10 years. So, I reminded him of something that had happened, and actually, it happened quite a few years ago on this day in 1979, at the American Embassy in Tehran. 90 people, including 63 Americans, were taken hostage by militant student followers with Ayatollah Khomeini. The students demanded the return of Sahab Mohammed Raza Pablidov, who was undergoing medical treatment in New York City at that time. As you well know, as we do, as being a part of that history, that hostage taking took place for over a year before we were able to get our Americans that were taken hostage freed. So, I wanted to at least pass that on to a lot of our younger people that don't, might not understand that the Middle East has been in turmoil for a good number of years, even more prior to 1979. But that's one thing that kind of stood out as being relevant to today. Also coming up, we have Veterans Day, which was originally Armistice Day on November 11, 1919, was the first anniversary of the end of World War I. Congress passed a resolution in 1926 for an annual observance of November 11th to become the national holiday beginning in 1938. Unlike Memorial Day, Veterans Day pays tribute to all American veterans, living or dead, but especially gives thanks to the living veterans who served their country honorably during the war and our peacetime. Veterans Day occurs on November 11th of every year in the United States in honor of the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918, that signed the end of World War I, known as Armistice Day. In 1958, President Dwight D. Eisenhower officially changed the name of the holiday from Armistice Day to Veterans Day. In 1968, the Uniform Holidays Bill passed Congress, which moved the celebration of Veterans Day to the fourth Monday in October. The law went to effect in 1971, but in 1975, President Gerald Ford returned Veterans Day on November 11th, due to the importance, the historical significance of the day.
Are you doing a trail for money?
Veterans Day and Memorial Day at Arlington National Cemetery holds an annual memorial service. The cemetery is the home of the graves of 400,000 people, most of whom served in the military. A little more statistics on our veterans. 18.2 million living veterans served during at least one war as of 2018. 9% of veterans are women. 7 million veterans served during the Vietnam War. 7 million veterans served during the Persian Gulf War. Over 17 million Americans served in World War II, and about 496, 777 were still alive as of 2018. Our former commissioner, Jack Shea, is one of those. Connecticut is home of the highest percentage of World War II veterans as of 2018 at 7.1%. 2 million veterans served during the Korean War. As of 2017, the top three states with the highest percentage of veterans are Alaska, Maine, and Montana respectively. With that being said, these people put their lives on the line and protected our freedoms as we know them today. One of our freedoms that we have will be represented as of tomorrow. You have the chance to approve and vote for your leadership. Show these men and women that honor and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman Overman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I'd like to thank our service pin recipients, Bernice and Carol, for their 45 years of service, most of which was for Carol, who had 35 years, which is still an astounding number.
It's awesome.
That's really quite something.
There's still eight trips a day, in the eighties.
And says a lot, says a lot for, says a lot for Dare County. And also, our Employee of the Month, Bob Bastain, and Chris Ward for his state award in his work with the Water Department. The chairman mentioned the visit that Commissioner Ross and county manager Bobby Outen and myself had last Monday, when we went to the School of Government in Chapel Hill to meet with the folks there to talk about the housing situation. Bobby will probably speak some more to this in a little bit. But as good as the meeting was in Raleigh, the, kind of the week before, and a lot of the subjects that were discussed there, the meeting in Chapel Hill at the School of Government was even better. We learned some things there. Those folks have really got their, got their stuff together. As I said, they have a 10-person group that works on housing issues. One of the real key things that came out of that meeting was learning about the importance of tax credits that can be used by builders to facilitate the building of essential housing, which is what we need in Dare County. They know builders that work and have the expertise required to do these kinds of projects. And as importantly, the people at the School of Government can be hired to help the county all along the way throughout the process of basically walking through this type of construction. So, it was a great meeting. We were in there with those folks for about two hours, and it seemed like 30 minutes. I mean, it was a, it was a really, really good and educational experience. As I said, it was in Chapel Hill, as the county manager points out, you know, it was a blue-sky day, and he said it was like that all the time. I find that a little hard, hard to believe, but, you know, I believed it when he said it, so I was very convinced.
Southern part of heaven.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Heard that a lot, heard that a lot. Was, did get a little ride through the campus, hadn't done that since my daughter graduated there, because she's disowned now. It's, it is a beautiful place on this earth, there's no doubt about that, and was happy to be there, and thank goodness for the work those folks do. And I think going forward with our endeavors regarding housing can be quite helpful should we choose to hire them to help us through this process. It was very enlightening, to say the least. Thank you, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman.
Sir, I was fortunate enough to go with Steve House and the chairman to the insurance briefing that Willie Kelly and Eric Planner and the young lady from Raleigh did. And one of the things I got out of it that really hit me was the fact that this flood insurance, the new maps that are coming out, some of the, for instance, houses, the flood plane will be dropping in some instances. And in talking to the young lady there, I explained that I had a house in Okeechobee, and then it got flooded, and she said, yeah. And I called the next day in Okeechobee and asked what the flood plane was. It was six foot. And the new maps put them at six foot. If that is the case, and everyone who had flood insurance and it was above six-foot rated, 400 houses got flooded, and if they dropped their flood insurance, they wouldn't have any coverage, no coverage at all. And so, I asked the building inspector, I said, so what would happen? He said, you would get reimbursements. And the problem is, y'all, the average folks, I'm thinking, you know, I can save that $4,000 a year, or I can save that $3,000 a year, and all of a sudden, they get, they cancel their insurance because this flood plane says that it's six foot. They had a nine-foot, seven-inch flood in Okeechobee. This is a different county, but I'm giving you the scenarios. The same thing can happen in Dare County. We haven't got our maps back yet, we don't know what it's going to be, but I'm very, very confident, there's some areas in Kitty Hawk where I live at that are probably going to come in at about nine, yeah, your house too?
Mine has a good.
Nine foot, and now it's at 10. Last, and the last thing we had in. Last, and the last thing we had in, in Irene, that far from getting into Irvin's house at nine foot, seven inches. That's the thing we, so as a county, what I would like for us to do, when we get the floodplain maps back, I think we need to go and get Dorothy to go clear across every ballistic thing we can put out there, let people know, you know, don't cancel your things and, and look at your houses, see what the history is in the past where the floodplain's been, and protect yourself, because there's no regrouping from a $200,000 claim that you have no money to put back into it. Um, having said that, do, have we heard any more about when exactly we're gonna get those maps?
They, they have been approved, and, um, we're looking at what, May, June, um, as what Donna has said, but we've had a full-on press campaign flyer that's been going out, Commissioner, with respects to, um, uh, the logo that we have, that, that Dorothy's put together. Um, I don't know if we have a copy of it, we can share it with you.
Low risk is not no risk.
Yeah, that's right. No risk is, is, low risk is not no risk. What concerns me, and we have said this in every public forum, and you're stating it again, and I'm glad that you brought this up, is our folks will do exactly that, they'll cancel without any, um, thinking that they're okay. These numbers are changing drastically in Dare. Because Hermine and Michael numbers were not in this mix, they were two major storms that flooded tons of properties in Dare County, and those figures are not in these maps. That makes it even that much more concerning, and people need to pay attention that, and we're doing everything we can, we've got a, we, we're posting this everywhere we can, we talk about it everywhere we can, is to please don't get yourself in that bind. I've been flooded twice. I've had water in my home, uh, twice now, and, and claiming 500-year storms, I've had it in the last seven years, so I've had, I've had two 500-year storms in the last seven years, so I know about the flooding. And, and I, we can't, and thank you again for bringing it up, but we cannot emphasize that enough, uh, to our citizens, is to don't walk away from this. You've got to protect yourself and purchase that flood insurance.
Chairman, I speak to one more issue while that's on the floor.
Absolutely.
The, the issue that you've brought up is true, when, when these maps go down and people cancel their flood insurance, and then they get flooded, they hit a loss that's uninsured. The second kicker for those same people is, is that when they cancel that insurance, and then five years from now, when they do the maps again, they'll have Hermine and Michael, they'll capture those properties, those base floods will go up, they'll now be required to have flood insurance under the terms of their loan, even though they just got rid of it. And when they do, they're not gonna get the subsidized rate that they had, they're gonna be back at the market rate.
Right.
And that flood insurance that they just canceled is gonna be substantially more expensive than what they had, uh, before they canceled it. And so they'll get a double whammy, they'll be at flood risk, they won't get paid for, then they'll be required to get flood insurance, and the cost of that's gonna be significantly more than what they paid for before. So the thought that you should not cancel your flood insurance, even if you're, even if the map says you should, uh, keep that in mind, because you're, you're taking two risks, and one of them's gonna bite you almost for sure. Um, Dare County, we're, we, and I think the towns have been working together, are gonna do some things to try to mitigate these problems. Um, you know, for new development, we can solve some of that, because we can keep the base floods, we can, you know, ordinances require the base floods to be at the current level, so that those folks will still build up high enough that maybe they won't get flooded, even though the maps say differently. But for old development, that's already here, there's not a whole lot we can do, other than what we're doing and try to get the word out to those folks that, hey, do not get rid of your insurance. My house is one of them, I'm gonna go from an AE zone, uh, to an X-zone. In theory, I could cancel my insurance. My insurance, where I live is, I'm not in a high-risk area, but it is an AE zone, uh, and we've never even had water in our yard, but the cost of that insurance is low compared to what it would be, uh, if in five years they raised me back into the AE and I then had to pay the, then current rate. So I'll keep mine, because it's cheap enough that it makes sense, and, and I think others should, should pay attention to that.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Thanks again, Commissioner, for bringing that up, that's extremely important, and we need to keep that in the forefront, is every single, I have no problem mentioning it every single meeting until we get, get people to buy into it. Commissioner Couch.
I attended the American Shoreline Beach Preservation Association, uh, annual, uh, conference, uh, this time it was in, uh, South Carolina Myrtle Beach, uh, County Manager and I were both down there. This was a buzzsaw of a lot of very technical information, but, um, confident that the way we have been dealing with, with our needs and necessities here with, uh, not just beach nourishment, but other issues that we're dealing with, flooding, coastal resiliency, it was, uh, uh, very much an epiphany, uh, to take a little look at where we're gonna be going forward with this. We had a lot of presentations that were, uh, including, uh, the submerged aquatic vegetation project that occurred, uh, west of the bridge, that was a $250 million project, so the state went in for about $2 million with a, uh, process from a private contractor that has shown that you can establish, uh, uh, these reefs, these necessary reefs for, uh, as fish nurseries, about 75 to 80% of your marine life gets its start, the crabs, the shrimps, your bottom of the food chain there, in these little tidal nurseries that, uh, we're helping to establish. Uh, very interesting also with, uh, and they do take, uh, this is a, they're open to all ideas about engineering, uh, of our shoreline, uh, even some of the tractors, uh, you have people pushing for retreat, just get off the beach, uh, I don't necessarily agree with that, I don't agree with that, but it is still something that is in a, a toolbox, if there's an instance where you do need to consider that. All these opinions were there, and I was, uh, just, uh, came away with a ton of information. And we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna have some challenges here with, uh, stormwater, we're gonna have some challenges here with resiliency. And the fact that this board and, uh, that we're staying, uh, educated on the processes that we're gonna be looking at, this is a very dynamic geologic process we have out here, these are barrier islands, they change, there's as much in a 12-hour tidal cycle here, uh, as much as, uh, I mean, just in the Cape Hatteras National Seashore alone, there's, uh, about more, uh, than every dump truck in the United States could carry just in a tidal cycle, about 15 times over. And while this information is coming out there, we're latching on to it, uh, we're gonna be able to put, uh, what we're learning to use here, not just this board as we continue to grapple with this and stormwater, but going forward as well. Absolutely fascinating, uh, North Carolina Byway Beach and Inlet Waterway Association is coming up, lot of good, uh, again, you, you sit in class all day, and I was just going through the notebooks and trying to keep up with all this information that is there. Uh, so fascinating, I love coastal engineering, it's, the math is very technical, uh, but it's, it's great stuff. Uh, speaking a little bit about down the banks here, we have, uh, the Cape Hatteras Anglers Club Tournament coming up this week, we're gonna hope that the weather hangs in there, even when the weather is bad. Uh, this is about a, this is a seven-figure impact that this tournament, it's the oldest surf fishing tournament in the United States, has on, uh, the bottom end, the, the dogleg of hatters down there, so we're looking, if the weather hangs in there, 125 teams, seven, uh, excuse me, six men each, uh, all from all over, essentially, the eastern seaboard, the Gulf Coast, Great Lakes Coast, uh, we're looking forward to a great event, uh, very well organized, uh, gonna be quite the economic shot. We are dealing with a little bit of, uh, issues, some of the numbers, we were discussing here in breakfast a little bit about, uh, what our numbers are gonna be with, uh, occupancy and saying, it's a little bit concerning, but something like this can help mitigate a lot of that. Uh, looking forward to a very successful Cape Hatteras Anglers Club Surfing Tournament. Got some other stuff, but let's wrap it up.
Thank you, Commissioner. That brings us to County Manager, County Manager.
Yes, sir, I have several things. Um, in the last week after the agenda came out, I got a, a pricing agreement from, uh, Priority Dispatch, and I think Cheryl sent you all copies of that.
Yep.
Um, that's for the software and equipment that he uses to dispatch. Um, it, it's a three-year term, which is why it has to come before you, and so he needed to get that done, so we sent that to you, and I need you to, uh, approve that agreement.
Pleasure, the board.
I move that we, uh, approve this agreement.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second about Commissioner Tobin, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Over at the old COA site there with Old Mania Middle School, uh, we, in one of the pods out on the end, we have the Monarch Beach Club, uh, and that's the entity that provides programming for adults with, uh, intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we have provided that space to them for years, we provided it there, for the last several years, we provided it in another space for a number of years before that. Um, we, sometime back purchased that Kellogg Supply property over there, and we, we've now got that place renovated and painted and up to speed, and we are planning to move the Monarch Beach Club into that space. And in that regard, we're gonna be doing a lease. Um, the lease is similar to the leases we've done with other groups like this, is it's no rent, and we do the maintenance, uh, they use our facility to provide that service, and we take care of that. Um, it, I don't remember the term, I think it's a five-year lease, but it also has a 90-day termination, and it's, we can terminate it and they can terminate it, uh, on 90 days' notice, if, if something came up where we had a need for that facility, they're aware that, uh, you know, there might be a, a higher priority, a county need for it in the future. Um, I'm telling you all this because we're in the throes of getting that lease done, but we also have to do some things, we have to publish it and have a public hearing on the lease. I wanna do all those things to try to meet the chairman's deadline of, to get them out and in, so we can begin that demolition, uh, in mid-November, and so...
My mall is just waiting.
I wanna be sure that you are, are all okay with a lease on those terms, and again, no rent, we provide all the maintenance, they occupy, provide, uh, the services, a 90-day termination, uh, and if you all don't have any objections, we'll move forward and get that in final form. I don't need your approval, we'll bring you the actual lease with everything in it for your approval, or denial if you don't like it, but I didn't wanna move forward with it if you didn't like those terms. Um, and the second thing I need is I need to be sure I have the authority from you all to go ahead and set the public hearing, do the affidavit, do the things I need to do, have the chairman sign them to get that stuff out there, so that at the earliest meeting we can, we can get that back before the board.
You ain't gonna hear no opposition from me concerning that, but I'm ready to rock and roll.
I just have one question, have you been watching a lot of Property Brothers or something on TV? You've got this demo thing going.
No, man, we can't get them facilities down quick enough.
So somebody would say, so moved, so moved.
As, as a motion on the floor, um, by Commissioner House, there's a second.
Second.
Second about a vice chair and Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sent? Motion carries unanimous. But while we're on that subject, do you have an anticipated time? When you gonna bring that? Will it be?
I gotta ask Dustin, what, how long do we have to put the note, how many days do we have to have the notice out published, and it'll be the first meeting when that expires?
Okay.
With that approval, I can go ahead and do, normally we would come back to you and say, here it is, do it, and then bring it back at a later date, that'll take another 30 days, so I'm trying to speed the process.
Because I believe our finance director has got our, our demolition contractor, uh, in, on radar sight, don't you?
I've got a note to talk to Angie about this schedule.
Okay.
It gives you a little time to shut down the mall a little bit.
Right.
We're, we're definitely aware that the board would like for us to move on that as quickly as we can. Just a heads up, over between the cooperative extension and the probation parole office, uh, we've been asked by the state to allow them to do a boring under our driveway to run some fiber from one building to the other, and we're gonna let them do that, won't cost us anything, but, uh, they're gonna do that and that fiber will be in place there. As you know, down in Avon, for a long time, they've been asking us for funds to do some kind of a study to figure out what it would cost them to do a beach nourishment project. And we've said we, you know, didn't really wanna do that, spend those dollars yet, because we didn't know when or if we'd have money to do a project, and so until we had a way to fund it somehow, we didn't wanna do that. At the time we had those discussions, there were no other projects on the table, so there wasn't anything imminent where we had to start looking at costs for various projects. Well, Southern Shores is moving forward in earnest now, and they're trying to do a project, and so at some point, we're gonna have to figure out what we can do, how much we can do, what we can do for either or both entities and all that, and, and we're gonna now need to know the answer to the questions that the folks in Avon have been asking, as well as the answer to the questions in Southern Shores as to what their project's gonna actually cost and all that. Uh, when we did the other projects, we allocated out of the beach nourishment fund up to, uh, $250,000 to the towns for them to do those studies and figure that stuff out, so that we could then make funding decisions in the future. And so what I'm proposing to you now is your authorization for us to allocate up to $250,000 to Avon, as well as up to $250,000 to Southern Shore, so they can do those final studies, we can get final numbers, and when the time comes, we can sit down with our nourishment models and figure out what we can do to help, if anything, in any of these projects.
Thank you, Bobby. Any, uh, any questions, Bobby, concerning that?
I, I got one. Um, so basically, $250,000 to do a study for Avon, $250,000 to do a study for Southern Shores. So Southern Shores town doesn't put any money into that study?
The way we did it in the past is, the, to the extent that it costs more than that, then yes, to the extent that it was cheaper than that, no. And, and all we're doing is doing the same thing here that we've done with the other towns as they did their projects.
Okay, I just, I just, I just wanna grasp that.
And it's all the beach nourishment.
And it is, and, and the fun...
And it's coming out of the beach.
And they've ran the miles and the fund supports, we've got enough money to, to allocate that and still meet our commitments in the fund.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Pleasure, the board. There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner House, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Um, Commissioner Tobin talked about our meeting with the Corps, and we met with the Corps, we also met with the state, with the state down there. There's a memorandum of understanding between the state and the Corps, and, and that memorandum of understanding sets forth how the money goes out of the state's beach or inlet management fund to the Corps. So the process is, as we fund our share of things, we have to give our money to the state, the state then matches it two-thirds, one-third, and then they send it for Oregon Inlet and three-quarters, one-quarter for hatters. And then they send the money to the Corps, then the Corps uses the money to do it. That process takes a month or more to do it, and we often don't know a month or more out when the dredge is gonna be here, depending on time, and it takes me two weeks to come to you, to get your approval to allow me to move the money that you budgeted to do those things. And so in order to expedite these things and make all of the timing match, I'm asking for you to give me the authority to move our funds out of those beach inlet, out of the inlet management funds that we've set aside in the budget, to the state and the Corps, uh, as they become needed, rather than having to come back to you each time to do that, as long as I don't exceed, uh, what you all have budgeted for that purpose.
Any questions, Bobby?
I just think that's an expeditious way to deal with it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner House, further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
And just on another aside on that, what, my guidance will come as the timing from the Oregon Inlet Task Force and from the Waterways Commission, as those needs and those inlets arise, they'll tell me, we'll get Ken to give us the numbers, and when we have the numbers, we'll get the money where it's supposed to be, at least from our end, to make those projects go forward. The last thing I have is, Commissioner Oberman talked about, uh, the meeting we had at the school government about the accessible housing, and it was a long meeting and it was full of information. Um, they have a, an entity there, I think there's 10 people, they said, that work in that entity, that act as consultants for a fee, we'd have to pay them, to come in and help communities do this kind of thing. They've done it for Lumberton, they're doing it with the city of Durham, they've done it with others. Um, we asked them to send us a proposal, I haven't gotten it yet, but when I do, I'll I haven't gotten it yet, but when I do, I'll bring it to you. There's like three options that they can give us. One is they can help us with just a long-term, overall, multiple-year accessible housing plan. They'll look at all available property and costs and all those kind of things that help us do a long-term plan. They can come back and simply assess our plan at the Bowser Town site and help us with that project only. Or they can do what they call a reactive approach, as we do things on our own, if we want them just to look at it and say, yeah, you've touched all the bases, or this is dumb, don't do it. They'll do that as well. So they're going to send us those proposals with some pricing. When we get those, I'll bring them to you, and I'm sure that Rob and Wally and I'll look at them and make some recommendations based on what we know once we get those proposals, and we'll ask for those. We expect them pretty soon. We've made it clear that we're ready to move, we want to get going, and so they're, they're working on them as we speak. And that's all I have.
Good stuff. Thank you, County Manager. Public information offered. Dorothy, you have anything for us today?
I'd just like to point out, y'all have talked about the updated flood maps, and there is a site, if people are interested in seeing what their current flood zone is and what the proposed is, OBX Flood Maps. Donna Creve has worked with the town planners and put a lot of really good resources together. So please send people to that site, and they can get the most updated information and learn about what's coming. And they did, Chairman, they did talk about having another community meeting as we get closer.
Yeah.
Maybe in March or April.
Yeah. Donna, is there a link on the Dare County site for that OBX flood map?
It is.
Okay.
But that OBXfloodmaps.com goes directly to it. And at the very top, you're going to see that graphic that we were talking about, the low risk is not flood risk. But you can get to it from the homepage, but you can also get there directly. And, and it's a great resource. So Donna worked hard, like I said, with the towns on that. And then we've talked about Veterans Day and honoring our veterans. Patty did a great presentation, but we did update our video. So if you all don't mind, I'd like to take a couple of minutes and just show you that video.
Absolutely.
And we'll be trying to spread that widely over the next week, just to recognize the role of veterans in our community and the resources that you all have made available to veterans. Because we are fortunate to have a veterans service person. A lot of counties do not have that resource. So you have that map?
Dare County is home to about 4,000 veterans. That's 4,000 citizens who have faithfully served our country. Our veterans deserve respect and honor for the commitment they made to our nation, and they deserve the assistance they need accessing benefits available to them. Because navigating these benefits is a complex and sometimes difficult process. In appreciation for their service, the Dare County Board of Commissioners established the Dare County Veteran Service Office and the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council. The Veteran Service Office has dedicated staff to help local veterans and their dependents access the benefits they may not even know are available to them, including disability pay, dependent and survivor benefits, medical care, education, home loans, burial benefits, and a lot more. Patty O'Sullivan, accredited veteran affairs administrator, has access to the Veterans Affairs Benefit Management System, and provides assistance to Dare County veterans and their families as they navigate the VA system. If you don't know what form to fill out, she can find the correct one and make sure it's filled out properly. If you get a letter from the VA you don't understand, she can tell you what it means and what you should do next. And if you're wondering what's taking so long with your request, she can log in and tell you exactly what the holdup is.
I'm Patty O'Sullivan. I'm the Veteran Service Officer for Dare County. I come from a military family. My father was a veteran, my brother is a veteran, my nephews, my son. I'm very passionate about helping veterans in Dare County. I want to do everything I can to get them the benefits that they deserve. One of the biggest issues we have is veterans don't realize they have this service available to them. And I want them to realize that they can reach out to me, and I'll be happy to help them, to do everything I can to try to get them the help that they need. If you're living in Dare County and you need my assistance, call me at 252-475-5604 and schedule an appointment, so I can sit down and meet with you and help you any way I can.
If for one reason or the other you don't qualify for VA programs, that doesn't mean that help isn't available. The Veterans Advisory Council has made it their mission to connect veterans in need with organizations that can help them. They partner with local groups and charities like Interfaith Community Outreach, Room Indian, the VFW, and American Legion. If a local vet needs a ride to a VA hospital, a wheelchair ramp, or even a place to sleep, they combine resources and try to make those things happen. Over 100 local businesses show their appreciation for our veterans by honoring the Dare County Veteran ID Card. The cards are issued by the Veterans Advisory Council, and participating businesses ranging from restaurants to plumbers offer a discount or other benefit to cardholders. Cardholders also receive free rides on Dare County Transportation System. Dare County salutes our veterans and thanks them for their service and sacrifice.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dorothy. That brings us to the end of our meeting, and is there a motion?
I've got one thing, and I apologize.
All right.
When I talked to you about the fiber, I thought that we just needed it, but I looked at my little sheet, they're asking for an easement, and so I need authority to execute that easement.
Okay. Motion to do so?
Stand by.
Motion by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Tobin, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. That brings us to the adjournment of our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on November the 18th?
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Commissioner House to adjourn. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.